The New Britain Board of Education, providing students with a high-quality education.
Let me convene this Board of Education meeting on May 5th, May 4th, sorry. And Kristin, can you call the roll?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercier.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez-Sims.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane. Ms. Diane Leia.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes. Ms. Nancy Rodriguez. Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Okay. And did you get Tony Kane join us later? Okay. Let's get back to the agenda here. So let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. Gail, can you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. I feel like I have to stand up. Somebody won't be able to see me. And to the republic which is... Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And, okay. So I've already done the roll call of members. So let's start with a moment of meditation and just keep in our minds all of the healthcare workers who have been working so hard during this pandemic and all of the families who have lost someone. And all the people who are adjusting to trying to parent and work at the same time from home and the teachers who are doing that. So let's just keep all this in mind. Okay. All right, so we have somebody on the phone who we're trying to... Let's see if that's somebody who would like to participate in the meeting?
So someone called in with an 860 phone number that ends in 74. If you're here for public participation, you can unmute yourself. I believe it's *6 to unmute yourself and do public participation now. If that's us, there you go.
Hi, it's Helen Taylor. I'm from the Board of Ed. I was asked to join the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. We just wanted to know who the... We just need to know who the number was. So I don't think there's anyone for public participation then.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Let me just pull it up here. I just want to begin with recognizing that this is the week we typically recognize all of our teachers in our district. And I think we need to especially, and Merrill, you mentioned it in the moment of silence, the work that our teachers, our paraeducators, all of our staff that has a part in our buildings in supporting our buildings and all the work they've done. They have worked tirelessly as we have moved from a live to a virtual schooling. And I just want to, I want to just recognize them for all of their hard work. Certainly, we could not do this without them. I want them to know too, and I'll email them later tonight, that we have our students who've created artwork for them. Again, and we send out note cards each year for our teachers with original artwork. We will be mailing those, snail mailing those in. And hopefully, the teachers will get them within the next couple of weeks. So we didn't forget about you, even though we haven't seen you in a while. So that's the first thing. And what I decided to do tonight was, I know just from... The board members had let me know that there was some... There was a question actually from an alderperson around what we're doing currently with our students with special needs, around the feasibility study at Chamberlain regarding the distribution of the Chromebooks, et cetera. So your entire superintendent report really does. I just wanted to make sure. It's not that we haven't talked and we haven't communicated, but I wanted to make sure that it's all together in one document. And what I would like to do, if you're okay, is just a couple of minutes each, have Mark Spalding first talk about the work that we've done. And again, we'll be brief. I know it's my superintendent report. But this way, if you have a question, you'll be able to ask that question now. So Mr. Spalding, if you could please just... I'll mute mine while you speak.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I'm going to recap basically what we've done for the last six weeks. Okay, starting again, the week before we close, I believe it was the 12th. The Department of People's Service worked closely with the Department of Academics to develop a long-distance learning plan for all of our students. And so those, we brought together our special ed teachers into those meetings along with myself and our coordinators to ensure that when these programs with these learning, online learning supports were put in place, that we had a voice at the table and that materials were differentiated in a way so that there was access and equity for everyone. Following that, we started the plan. That was for the first two weeks. But we knew at that time, we probably would go beyond that. And so what the Department of Special Education did, Department of People's Services, with guidance from the state, we put together a document for all of our team members, all of our staff members, what learning and what the recommendations would be for all of our teachers moving forward to support our children. So again, the three pillars were access and equity requirements for continued educational opportunities for students with special needs, developing communication and documentation protocols for all attempts to engage students, and setting forth procedural requirements for the PPT process. We met for two days on the 31st of March, and then again on April 1st. We met with over 200 people, including our administrators and union leaders, to spell out what the expectations were for sped case managers, pre-k teachers, related service providers, social workers, ESAs, paraeducators. Okay? During this time, since we've been... Our buildings have been closed. Our paraeducators have been supporting kids in the virtual world, although also they've been doing adult learning at this time. And it's been quite successful. Personally, I've made connect ed calls to families twice, to all families with students with special needs. The first one went out on 4/7. That's a typo. It should be 4/22 is the follow-up. We put information on our website and on our Facebook page. It should be last week, we actually had a meeting with... Which is noted here. We had a meeting with... An interview rather with the New Britain Herald. And maybe some of you saw that. It came out on Friday. But preparing for that meeting, I found out that right now, to this point, we've made over 21,000 contacts to our families with children with special needs outside of the academic arena. So that's not just, that's not kids logging in. Those are contacts from staff, social workers, teachers, follow-up, checking in on people. So we have over 2,300 kids. There's been over 21,000 to this level. It's more than that now, because this was last Wednesday. Right now, 87.5% of our special needs students have logged on into the Google Classroom. As of last week, only 119 had not logged on. And that's because they didn't have either internet access or Chromebooks. Now, Phase 2 of the Chromebooks, as you know, are going out. And so we hope to increase that number. 61 did not have internet access. We had a social worker outreach recently posted on Facebook. We're meeting tomorrow. A meeting tomorrow with a social worker who, we're going to put together a program where our social workers, where some social workers are going to be engaging our parents only, because we're receiving a lot of feedback right now where our parents are a little stressed out. So we're going to be providing a program for, through our social workers, for parents and guardians only. We did have that interview in the New Britain Herald. I thought it was pretty good. And now, now we're going into the next phase. We'll be, we're going to start providing... We're going to start handling annual reviews and try-and-rolls now. So the guidance prior to, prior to a week ago Friday, was that, you know, you had to be real mindful about moving forward with annuals and tries. Since then, the Department of Ed has come out with some guidance. I've attached that to this document. It came out on 4/24. We met last week to discuss the rollout. Right now, we have 850 annual reviews and tries that were due between when we closed through the end of this year. So we're now rolling out a plan. It starts this week. We're going to be contacting families. And basically, if a family, if the family wants to move forward with an annual review or try, we will do that. We have a lot of flexibility in the planning process. And so that's the next phase, to do as many as we can between now and the end of the year, and then into the summer. Because I'm predicting that we'll have, you know, an iceberg at the beginning of the year. And so we want to trip away at that as much as possible. We're also, the state came out with some documentation guidance with respect to service hours, which we're going to start rolling that out as well. And so that's like really the third phase. It's now the sort of the compliance piece of special ed. We've been focusing on providing services right now. Our coordinators are meeting with their teams on a weekly basis. I'm popping into some of those meetings. I'm going into Google Classrooms. And so I like what I'm seeing. So now we're kind of taking to the next level. If this goes beyond the year, and then the compliance piece. Again, we have flexibility with that. Some districts have chosen not to move forward. But I think it's the prudent thing to do. And in cooperation with our attorney, we're going to move forward in that, in that respect.
Sorry, I had the privilege of sitting in on the interview with the Herald reporter. And the silver linings that Mark's staff was reporting, parents reaching out to us, asking for support in how... And to Mark's point, there's levels of stress, clearly. And but, but the silver lining is they are reaching out and we are forging better relationships with many of our families now who are taking counsel from our OTPTs, our Speech and Language, and all the providers to better meet the needs of their own children during this time. So I just thought that was, and I have to give them credit. They have worked incredibly hard and continue to do that to reach out and provide the best possible services we can during this pandemic.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on one other thing. You know, one of the things we've discovered during this time is, in particular, our parents of children with autism, because of this new environment, the parents are actually working with the teachers and they're actually learning skills that they didn't previously have on how to support their children. Which, you know, when this is over, they're going to have those skills and they're, you know, they're able to support them in the home. So I think that's been, you know, again, if that's... If there's a silver lining, that's, that's one of them.
Gail, I think you had a question? To unmute yourself.
I hit it too many times, sorry. Just a quick question. Those videos that the social worker from Dealaretto posted, are those like in the Google Classrooms? Because they were really great.
So there's the one that went on Facebook. Is that the one you're referring to?
It's a social worker from Dealaretto. There was a couple. One, how to deal with anxiety, and one, how to deal with depression.
I was referring to one that went on the, on the Facebook. I'm not familiar with that one. But yeah, that is available. Those should be available to people, you know. And I can look into that. Again, when we're going to meet with our social workers, that would be something that we could, that person could be sharing with their colleagues across the district. So everyone who may not be, have access to it would have access to it.
Okay, they were really great. They were short, but they were just like, they were, they were really great little videos. I just wasn't sure if it just was on the Dealaretto page or if it went to everybody and it was like... Good.
Probably, probably.
Yeah, okay. And I just want to add to that too. I had another meeting this morning with Nelva Marquez-Green and the Anna Grace Project around partnering with, just doing those quick... She, she has a Monday night series. And we are going to be linking those to our Facebook page as well, in addition to having other conversations with families. And it's for families only, not so much the students, around, you know, how to cope during this time. So thank you, Mark. I'm going to ask now if Ray Moore will come on and give an update, please, on the Chamberlain renovation project?
Yeah, Chamberlain, we met again this morning over at Chamberlain School with the contractors, the MEP contractors, the HVAC, Electrical and Mechanical, to go over the new syst, the existing systems that are in Chamberlain right now and what we would like to have in new Chamberlain. We have another meeting tomorrow and a third meeting this week on Thursday to go over all of the existing pieces of Chamberlain School, the structure, is it structurally sound? What needs to be done for code compliance? This is an in-depth report that will take at least until the end of June to complete the feasibility study. When the feasibility study is completed, then with the mayor's permission, we can interview for an architect and construction manager and start the design process.
So Mr. Moore, are we on track?
Yes, we are.
What are the, what are the deadlines that we've got to meet? What's...
Right now, the deadline that we... If we want to start construction a year from now, we need to bring an architect onboard in July and a construction manager to start the drawings so that we can bid this project in April and start it when school session ends in 2021. So if the mayor gives us permission to interview, to advertise and hire an architect, we're ready to go.
All right.
Thank you. And then finally, part of my, I'm sorry, my superintendent report, if Jeff Prokop and Sandra Sanford can come on to talk a little bit about Chromebook distribution and where we stand.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start us off and then I'll hand it off to Sandra for the second part. But as was mentioned by Mark already, we've gone through a second round distribution at this point. And our numbers as of today are 3,211. Chromebooks have been given to families at this point. So now, we're at that stage of preparing for future rounds. We've just started basically the surveying of our families one more time to get a handle on how many students are sharing devices in those households so that we can further go about getting more devices into the hands of these families. At this point, as the rounds have been going on, you know, the building level teams have been going even to hand-delivering at certain points to households, doing everything they can possible in effort to get these devices over to families. And of course, this all continues to be the process as we keep getting these devices out there. Of course, the big news would be the, what was in the news regarding our partnership with Art Schaler and the whole concept of trying to now address the issue of those hotspots of network internet loss, where network, you know, connectivity is a challenge in certain neighborhoods for our families to get these vehicles equipped with the Wi-Fi capacity to be able to broadcast from the car out a good 300 feet in any direction of the area for families to be able to get connected. So that, of course, has items on the board tonight. And everything is in a work, work in progress at this point to where we should be seeing equipment getting into the hands of Schaler this week, hopefully late this week, to getting to the installation point. So that's all developments that have happened since late this afternoon with that part of it. And Sandra, I don't know if you want to jump in now regarding the outreach continuing, maybe?
Sure. Sure, I am just being modest. So I'm going to give a shout out to him and his team. The amount of data that goes into the work to determine, one, which family's already received a Chromebook, who identified as needing one, making sure all the seniors have one, establishing a set of protocols. There's a lot of data that goes into it. So a shout out to them for doing that work. I feel like, you know, he, what I'm about to say is, my new compare to the work they've done. But the outreach has been where the FSL, social workers, have been finding out and doing surveys and communicating to our families to find out where they stand. The FSLs have also been reaching out to see how, if they're having any struggles, if they need a Chromebook. But overall, collectively, finding out the data so that Jeff and his team can do the magic to figure out where those resources are needed and how they can support those families. So far, I think we're at round two of round two. Second round of distribution went out and we're collecting the data to determine who still needs one. Is it because of transportation? Is it because with the pandemic, they're doubling up and they're not at home? We're diving into those deeper issues to find out how we can support those families.
Thank you. And I just want to add to, the bigger picture is, again, because the unknown is, what will September look like for our families and for our students? We don't know. But we're preparing to, as best we can, put a one-to-one device in all of our students' hands. This is in addition to the generous donation from the Dalio Foundation of 2,400 laptops. Again, we won't distribute the laptops until August. And that is us being, I would say, good stewards with our dollars and with those, with those items. We will be giving the laptops out to our current eighth grade students, ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade students. And that is for them to use throughout their high school years. And so we're waiting really to see what students will be entering New Britain High School in the fall. And by August, we feel we'll have a better idea after the lotteries and the acceptance of families going into magnet schools will be, will be settled. And we'll have a more accurate picture of our incoming freshman students. And so they will be the ones... And if you recall, our, all of our high school students got a one-to-one Chromebook as, they have a one-to-one now in the home right now.
Okay. Tony, you have a question? Unmute yourself.
Gail had one too. I don't want to leapfrog her if she wants to go first.
Well, just depends on what yours, if yours is on Chromebook. Mine was just on graduation. I know there's a committee that is meeting. I'm just curious if they have any idea about all-night grad party? I know Damon's on the line and I sit on that committee. I will say they've been working hard on the actual graduation day experience for students and the all-night grad party. Damon, if you wanted to, maybe I wasn't a part of some of that conversation? If you had anything about that right now?
Nothing more. We're just trying to thread a balance. There's so many unknowns right now. Though my big concern is, is that we don't want to publish a plan then only to have to pull back on it and really disappoint our students. So we're proceeding cautiously. But everybody on that committee is committed to creating as authentic and real an opportunity for our kids to celebrate that huge milestone as we can.
Okay. And I think, you know, Damon, I think the, just the concern is probably raising the funds to support it. So that's why people are just asking, are we doing it? Not necessarily to plan for it, but just to plan, funds, keep raising money for it. So that's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a great answer. Because I know that, you know, it's, there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
And we don't, we don't even know what guidance we'll be receiving from the state yet.
Right, right.
Right? So it's, I just, I don't want to disappoint kids. So I'd rather start all and then unveil happiness. Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay. Should they just, maybe just, I don't know. It's hard to wait, right? And I do want to bring up, and Sandra, you can speak to it. There's one really nice piece of news. Art Schaler yet again is coming to our rescue. Sandra, did you want to bring that up?
Sure. And as you know, Art Schaler's been a partner in a variety of ways for a long time. And this year, he's reignited and re-energized and working with us with Jeff and the Wi-Fi. And as he's looking at our school and the closeness of how long he's been to Britain, he came up with another idea about, they just purchased a sign that is off of Route 9, right by Stanley, at the end of Stanley, and allowing us to use their sign on graduation day to have a special moment for our seniors so that they can have a moment of the graduation day. We know will look different, but how do we make it special? So he's really energized about putting art, allowing us to use his sign for that day and for our seniors. What that looks like, we're still working on. I know there's a lot of work entailed with it and a lot of people working on that. But we wanted to let you know ahead of time, kind of keeping, the plan is out similar to what Damon is saying. When it's finalized, we'll be able to share it in the hopes that we can get all the seniors on that rolling within at least maybe a half hour timeframe.
Okay. Tony, back to you.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff, I was just wondering, you were talking about the mobile hotspots. Are we looking maybe two weeks out before they go active?
Yeah, I still think we're on target for mid-May. Because once, of course, they get installed, we still have to do configurations and work with the companies so that way, you know, for example, they're locked out from the ability, say, to stream Netflix and other types of bandwidth eaters that will affect the experience to be not useful for everyone out there. So yeah, basically, we're still looking on target for that. And can't wait for that to happen.
Okay, thank you. And then just a follow-up to that, for either Nancy or someone else in Cabinet. Have we been able to engage those students in any other way? Obviously, them not having technology in their hands for the, you know, the period we've missed so far? Whether, you know, paper assignments or any way to reach them currently?
It's teacher reaching out. So yeah, the answer to that, Tony, is yes there. As best we can, and if we have current contact information with the families, the teachers are reaching out to those students. You know, we, we did the paper packets the first two weeks. So, and again, parents could pick those up. And beyond the paper packets, we have not sent out additional paper packets. But, and some of our students hopefully are using their gaming systems. We're not really, well, we're not really sure on that. But it's been mostly through phone calls and engaging kids that way.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to say, you know, while, while we know, and again, I'll say it again, this is a Band-Aid approach right now to the bigger issue of finding a way to connect our students. And while I care about the entire city, I'm most concerned with just connecting our kids to Wi-Fi. Because I foresee that the fall is going to look different than all of us returning on the first day of school, jumping into the classroom. And so we really want to be preparing for that. And we'll be sending out communications in the next couple of weeks around a plan and actually hoping that the city council will come in and sit with us too, so we can all discuss this as a city.
Okay. Anything else? Me and Nancy?
The only other thing I wanted to mention, and I did put it in my report, is we, we aren't sure. We're going to probably come back to you on, when we have our Saturday board meeting. We, right now, graduation is scheduled for June 22nd. We might ask to change it once again to June 19th. That will be the only change. But we, we don't want to say yes. We don't want to say June 19th for tonight because we're still meeting. But that might be one of the possibilities, just moving it to that Friday instead of the Monday. But you'll know more on the board meeting in May. And that's it, my superintendent report. Are there any questions around that at all? I just want to be clear. I think I really hit on all of the points. And these are things that I've communicated to you and things that I've communicated. I mean, we've been very, I think, communicative on our Facebook page and our, and our district homepage for people. And we're always a phone call away. So I'm pretty sure we hit all of those, those leverage, or those... So I'm pretty sure we hit all of those leverage, or those checkpoints tonight.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Is there a curriculum committee report? Violet?
Ah, there it is, it's on.
Okay.
I don't have anything new in terms of curriculum.
Okay, did committee meet this?
No, the committee didn't meet, we just had the one that comes right after, Nick's committee. You can't think right now.
Okay, so policy committee.
Yes, we did meet, we talked a good length about the high school graduation requirements for this year, and we do have a revision that we're bringing forward today based on state guidelines and trying to make it as easy, like, make it as easy as possible for students in this situation we're in right now to meet all their graduation requirements, so that policy is on the agenda for tonight. We talked at length about other policies around grading and started to review some of our internet usage policies in light of the fact that they clearly were never intended for a situation like we're in now, where everybody's online and we're all teaching from home, but we didn't have a draft to bring forward to the board on those at this time, so those we're continuing to work on. And that's what we covered.
All right. Personnel, did personnel meet?
But I have no report, we did not meet.
We have a few grants that were taken in, $40,000 from Community Foundation of Greater New Britain for $40,000 for the summer programs, See, Create, and Extreme. We are taking in a grant from Gen Youth to purchase items to continue the distribution at, for $2,000 for each of the following sites, New Britain High, Dealaretto, Smalley, and Pulaski. And then we do have a $64,700 grant that we're taking in. I'm not even going to pretend to say this name, but it's through Public Utilities for the Discovery, Discover videos for servers and additional equipment. Other than that, nothing else to report.
All right, so are there any board reports?
Just that I really, really miss sports. I miss baseball season.
Violet, did you want to make a report?
Yes, I need to make a correction, because I'm on 800,000 meetings and I was trying to toggle my screen for all my agendas, and so curriculum did meet on the 20th. But it wasn't new information, that's what it was, so it was, we went over the, hold on, now I lost it. Sorry. What Gail mentioned, which is the iReady assessments that we're going to switch to next year for reading, and we had already talked about that in meetings before, so it was like a very short report that it was moving forward and that it was moving forward to finance. And we did also get an update on the suicide prevention curriculum, and that was also something that was previously brought up in our retreat and was a bit of an update. So it was all kind of continued information, but we did have a meeting on the 20th.
The other board members. Okay, seeing nobody wanting to make a report, let's move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Do you have to do that?
Somebody want to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Just as a clarification, consent agenda by its nature doesn't need a motion, because it's basically considered unanimous consent if nothing is pulled off.
No motion needed. Okay. Okay. So as long as there's nobody who wants to pull anything off the agenda, the consent agenda, I think we can go ahead and ask the secretary to cast one vote in favor of that. And we can, going back and forth between what happened to the rest of my agenda. And here we go. Okay, so our first one is approving administrative appointment. Nancy, you want to say anything about this before we go into executive session? Or do we just go into executive session on this?
Thank you, we'll go into executive session, and I ask that Mr. Kevin Kane go along with me into exec session, as well as Kevin Deone.
Okay, so the way we do this is that we will stop the live stream and the recording for the executive session. We will have that conversation and then we will come back and the live stream will resume. And all of the cabinet members who are here get off and rejoin us when executive session is done.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of an administrative appointment for the board, Ms. Sarah, Mr. Kane, and Mr. Deone to join us.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session, let's stop the recording in the live stream.
And we'll be back shortly.
Okay. Are we all back now? All right, so we are coming back out of executive session. And Nancy, do you want to make a recommendation on this administrative appointment?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to recommend Mr. Kevin Deone as our new facilities director. He comes with many years of experience, a wide range of experiences in management, in this field in particular. He is leaving a school district now to come to New Britain that is very similar to our school district, other than we're double the size, and has come highly recommended. So I'd like to recommend Mr. Kevin Deone for hire.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve we hire Mr. Kevin Deone to the position of, looking for the exact title. Facilities manager, is it facilities manager? Director of facilities, director of facilities. Motion that we hire Mr. Kevin Deone to the position of director of facilities.
Second.
All right, we have a second in motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a second in motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Let's move on to the next item. Okay, a motion to approve the purchase order of the Power School Records Management.
Motion to approve the purchase order of Power School Employee Records Management in the amount of $22,166.
And who is the second by?
Annie.
Annie, okay, all right, we have a second in motion, all in, or any discussion on the matter? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Nick has it then.
What's that?
I had a quick question, I'm sorry. Just wanted to know, is this replacing a current bit of software that we use for employee records management? Or is this a renewal of what we've used in the past?
So Nick, right now, we're using Apple Trax. This is an upgrade, an enhancement to it, it's more paperless. Power School is now associated with Sun Guard. When the HR Department talent office is looking at this, more a paperless system, they looked at Apple Trax. They had them on a system too, they also looked at Power School. Power School and Sun Guard, you know, are together right now, and actually, Sun Guard does have a very good application software package that we're going to consider. But this is just a bridge right now, it's more of an enhancement, it's getting us to a paperless system that we should be at. You know, right now, we have a lot of records that we store, and we actually had to hire somebody part-time to come, you know, consolidate those records, so this is really the way we're supposed to go on paperless, especially now we're seeing with the COVID situation. We're seeing the same thing with accounting, we're actually going to go more paperless too with our upgrade. So this is just an enhancement to the system.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, we have a second in motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, hearing some late ayes, but no nays. Motion carry. And next, we have a purchase order on Wi-Fi, for Wi-Fi equipment. Sorry, want to make that?
Make a motion to approve the, it's a bid waiver for the Wi-Fi equipment.
Yeah, purchase order and bid waiver for the Wi-Fi hardware.
And mobile data.
Amount of 26. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I think Violet.
I second.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so is there discussion on this one?
Just as a point of information, it's in the amount of just under $27,000.
Yep. This is what, go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to say, so these are the, this is the hardware that's going to go on the vehicles that Art Shaler is helping out with, correct?
Yep.
So we will own the hardware even after this and basically have the possibility later on of using it again in a similar way if there's a need.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion on this one? All right, we have a second in motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Hearing no nos. The motion carries, let's move on to the next one. Item D. Someone want to make a motion?
A motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver in the amount of $1,499,784 for replenishment of Chromebooks that are distributed, as well as increasing the district's capacity to provide additional Chromebooks, so one and a half million essentially.
Second. Oh. Sorry, there's a lag. Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion, is there discussion on this?
Quick question? Will this bring us to one-to-one ratio?
I'll let Jeff answer that. Closer, I mean, I believe we're getting 6,000, Jeff, are you on now?
I am on. Yeah, this will definitely, as Superintendent Sarah is mentioning, this will definitely bring us much closer, especially when we combine this with the 2,000 laptops coming through the state and such, versus also what we still have left over. We will be able to start down a path of choosing a different strategy of how we work with Chromebooks altogether based upon that. So we are really getting close at that point to the one-to-one.
Because we still had in the budget to replenish what was going to expire this year, correct? Okay.
Correct, this was part of the replenishment as well for that, so it's all working together. This is just the large, from the amount of funds that we had available for immediate replenishment, this became the amount of devices we could get.
Perfect, thank you.
Just to clarify, these funds are coming from where?
There's a budget transfer later in it that Kane can speak to, Mr., sorry, I'll let him.
Yeah, I know I'm jumping to the next agenda item here, but it also is from savings from transportation, if I remember correctly, largely.
Your correctness, yes.
Yeah, okay, so any further questions on item D, the purchase order and bid waiver to purchase 14, or $1,499 worth of Chromebooks? Let me just ask, how many Chromebooks is this? I don't, I don't have the, for somebody who doesn't have that package in front of them.
5,681.
5,681, okay. All right, any further questions on item D? We have a second in motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That was noise, but I don't think that was a no. All right, the motion carries, let's move on to item E. Someone want to make a motion?
A motion to transfer for purchase of Chromebooks and Wi-Fi vehicle. One million, I can't see. Let's see, oh, yeah, $1,525,970.
Second.
Okay. All right, so this transfers for a little bit more than the bid waiver there. Is the rest of that the next Chromebook order, or what's the difference?
So Merrill.
It's for the Wi-Fi permit.
Okay, got it, yes.
The next, it's a different, it's a different funding source.
Thing altogether, yes, okay, so any further questions about the budget transfer to pay for the Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi project?
I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
Um, I just, yeah, this is by, um, yeah, I just. Yeah, I just wanted to have someone please clarify from what fund to what fund is this transfer happening and sort of the rationale.
Okay, so let's go.
Kevin.
You all know, we closed schools on March 13th, so March 16th was the first day. We've incurred on our transportation budget 117 out of 180 days of transportation. So we only pay for what we incur. The governor's executive order asked, we reached out to districts and really kind of told you that they want you at least pay for some of the payroll costs. Have your bus companies bring back their drivers, their monitors, et cetera. So what, for both companies, we're actually paying them actual payroll incurred, along with actual benefits incurred. So for instance, if you call something back and they don't come back, we don't, we don't pay for that. There's also fixed costs associated with both companies. It could be lease payments on the buses, it could be your mortgage payment on your facility. So we actually have fixed costs too. For both bus companies, if we actually went out 63 days, for the last 63 days a year, for a first student, we're going to pay approximately up to, and that's what I'm saying, it's up to just under 63%, what we would have paid. For specialty, it's going to be up to around 55%. Now, we may not pay that, we may pay less, they have to give us proof. So we agree to fixed costs and we agree to variable costs, the variable cost is the payroll. So what you're seeing here tonight is really the savings between regular transportation and special ed transportation. You're seeing we incurred some costs higher in bus monitors, which we realized during the year, we were going a little high. So you're actually seeing a deficit in bus monitors, about $284,000, which we corrected in February. Regular transportation, we're going to have a surplus of $1.6 million. Homeless, we don't really, now we're going to have a deficit of 135. Special education, we have a deficit of 250. So we knew this going into this year, we started incurring more transportation costs with special education. So this transfer at the end of the day, next year, $1.5 million. So really flushing, we're actually taking all the deficits and surplus and we're flushing them all out. And there's a transfer over to MIS for the Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi. Now, I think when you listen to Jeff, Jeff's talking about on the for the Chromebooks, I know, I believe we gave out additional 3,000 Chromebooks, maybe it's going to go up to 4,000. So this, this purchase is going to actually increase our Chromebooks, but it's replacing Chromebooks too, I think we have to remember that too, we gave away Chromebooks. So we're actually buying more Chromebooks and it's getting us closer to one-to-one, but it's not one-to-one yet.
But the replacement would come from the budget of next year. But the replace.
Well, that's just, yeah, that replacement, really be honest with you, Gail, is just a replacement for, that's a replacement, that's not really adding on. That's really just taking the old Chromebooks and basically getting rid of the ones that, you know, could be seven years old and replacing with new ones. It's not really an added to Chromebooks.
So the budget transfer isn't paying for the replenishment, though?
No, it's, no, it's, well, no, it's really, it's paying for what we gave away, plus it's getting us some new Chromebooks. Those Chromebooks we gave away, I believe, you know, we may not get all of them back. And I think we know that, but Jeff actually looked at the Chromebooks that we had and he made a decision to give away the older Chromebooks. Some of them we were going to place anyway, but the other ones were at the later in their lives.
And Mr. Kane, I just want to add, as we surveyed the parents this week, up until this coming Thursday, asking those questions of, especially for our K students, we're trying to get as close as we can to a one-to-one. So approximately 3,200 that we already gave out, we're probably going to be giving out another 3,000 between now and the end of the school year. Really depleting what we have in the buildings. Jeff, did I represent that right?
Yes, that would be correct. And I think the only other thing to add is that we found we were getting more devices through the replenishment quote that we went through here. For one, because we're not purchasing carts, so we're saving the cost on that part of it, as well as, I believe, the volume alone gave us some additional quantity to them. So that's why we mentioned it, that it's actually bringing us closer, because this replenishment ended up getting us more devices than we anticipated.
If I could jump back just to Violet's question, and, you know, I think Mr. Kane answered it very thoroughly, but I want to make sure that I understood. I'm actually going to just. Let's see if I can do this. Here we go. So if I'm understanding this correctly, Mr. Kane, what, what we're looking at in the board packet with the transfers here? We are taking, realizing a savings of approximately 1.6 million in regular education, regular transportation. We're realizing a savings of approximately 300,000 in outplace transportation and another 300,000 in gasoline. And that brings us to 2.2 million in savings for transportation. That's, all of these come from Transportation Department. And where that money is being allocated is, part of it is being used to square deficit that we knew we were going to have in bus monitors, to also balance out the books in special ed and homeless transportation. And then the other one and a half million is what we're transferring to a new department, to MIS for the purchases of these Chromebooks, as well as the wireless. Is that a correct summation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any further questions on this topic? All right, in that case, all in favor of the budget transfer, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the next item. Someone want to make a motion for this next purchase of Chromebooks?
Motion to approve the purchase of three Chrome carts and three class sets of Chromebooks in the amount of $54,997. The funding sources, Alliance Extended School Hours Budget Revision.
Second.
Is there a second? And that was.
Gail.
Gail? It was. Okay, good. All right. Any discussion on this one? Okay, we like Chromebooks. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Can you hear me?
Since everybody's seen. Yeah, there we go. Yeah. Is there a question?
Yes.
Okay, so we seem to have half the people muted. I'm going to. You have a question, or are you saying yes?
I have a question, Merrill, this is by Violet.
Okay, go ahead.
So my question. Wrong thing here, okay. My question is about the funding source. This is coming from the Alliance grant and it says. Hold on, it's a trans. Oh my gosh, how did I lose this? Oh, extended school hours budget revision. So is this that we realized some savings on the usual extended school hours and we're transferring it to this? Or is this that the, the sort of improvement plan for Alliance money was revised to to move the money to this?
I'll let Mr. Kane answer that.
I can answer as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Sanford.
Kevin, I can. Can you, can you hear me? I'm using a headset this time.
Yes.
So the ESH grant is Extended School Hours Grant. And the money was for services that we're not, we're able to complete due to the closure, that we are able to reallocate to Chromebooks to continue with the same focus next year for our extended school hours. So the three elementary schools will be benefiting from having a cart that can be utilized during the day and as well as for the after-school hours.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions about this item? Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the next item.
Motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver for 72 adjustable height desks and 64 FlexFlow stacker chairs in the amount of $30,000 from the MET Fund.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. And are there questions about this?
I just had a quick question whenever I see a bid waiver. Did we go and do price code, like get quotes from multiple vendors, or did we just look at one spot?
Ms. Sanford? I can answer that, sure, we looked at, we looked at all of the vendors we used in the past that we started the MET Academy with, with the transformation of the MET at the high school. We had a few vendors and KLOG came in at the best price for those tables and for those chairs. In the past, we used CDWG, we used Red Thread, but KLOG came in at a better price. That will be fitting the remainder of the rooms that are being revamped right now. So all the tables and chairs would be complete with this order.
Okay. All right, any other questions about this? Hearing no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to graduation requirements. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, and this is actually a new policy, 6146.21, revised special graduation requirements for the class of 2020.
Second.
All right. Are there questions about this? Someone want to tell us a little bit more about what this is?
I do, I can go through very quickly and give a high-level overview. So the discussion that happened in policy centered around what is the best way to enable many of our high school seniors who potentially due to missing one credit or whatever, due to COVID, may not be able to graduate. And what we looked at is what are the minimum state requirements for graduation? And so what you see here is essentially reflective of what the minimum state requirements are for graduation. And we're looking to temporarily, with this policy, just for this year's graduation, graduating class to lower our requirements to the state minimum. So you can see that it says, under credit distribution requirements, just four credits in English, and it does not specify where they need to be. Three credits in mathematics, again, it does not specify where they need to be. Two credits in science, again, with no specification. Three credits in social studies, which includes half a credit in civics and American government, and that's the state requirement. One credit of physical education, one credit of fine arts, six elective credits for a total of 20 credits. So it's reducing the total number by three. And the other thing that it does is reduce a large number of the, you must have these exact literature, English credits or math credits, which could potentially, if there was a student as a senior who was trying to finish up that last math that was like, say, an Algebra II, right? Or they had three math credits, but they didn't have an Algebra II, or they didn't have a geometry. Would that allow them to still graduate? You can also see on the second page, it takes out all of the performance standards, because these are not at all required by the state. Many of them are tied to the SATs, which obviously did not happen as they normally would this year. And as you scroll down, you can see it takes out the elements of the student's success plan. It takes out the capstone requirement as well, because obviously, most students did not have a chance to present or complete. And it leaves in the seal of bioliteracy, because that doesn't, that's just an optional thing. And then I, we also asked Mr. Foran and Mr. Pierce to look at creating some language at the beginning, to make it very clear that this is not something that we're doing just lightly, but it's in a response to the pandemic that we're facing. And we also looked around to what other districts are doing, and there are districts that currently have lower graduation requirements than R23. So we felt that this was a way to enable our students to have the best chance to graduate, but still recognize, you know, that this is an extraordinary circumstance.
Okay. Are there questions about this?
I was more curious about other districts, what they were doing, were they, you know, removing some graduation requirements? You know, capstone usually start that at the beginning of the year, yes, you wouldn't be able to present, but you could still submit it. Yeah, that's a big project that, they don't have to do that in college as well.
Mr. Pierce and Mr. Foran?
Yeah, we, we talked about all these things, students who have completed the capstone have that credit, so that's an elective credit now. But the, the reality is that many students finish or do significant parts of it after March and continue to work on it through the end of the year. The ability to support that. So we, we went in knowing, thinking we were going to reduce the capstone. We had what other districts didn't look, the fact that other districts do require less, that jump from 20, the state has stayed at 20 until 2023, when they go to 25. We did some significant research into our number of seniors who might be impacted. Because traditionally, we have seniors that finish strong and get over that finish line. And there are approximately 81 of those seniors now who are kind of on the fence. The ability to finish strong, Satellite Academy seniors, as well as Britain High seniors, is limited without access to teachers that finish, especially at Satellite, is through supportive of of the seniors, I mean, of the students by the teachers in credit recoveries that they're finishing up, that haven't started during the year. So with, with different challenges around devices and internet access that our seniors are facing, we felt this was only fair, especially to those 81 seniors who We felt this was, was only fair, especially to those eighty-one seniors who, who are kind of on the cusp. We, our history tells us that traditionally, those kids who make it, that might be challenging this year.
All right, are there further questions?
Violet has her hand up.
Okay, Violet, go ahead. You're muted, though.
Yeah, I should, all right, yeah. Sorry, I had my hand up and then someone was texting me that the link to watch us live wasn't working. So I don't know if that was for a lot of people or, um, just a heads up, don't know if anyone has heard that. Of course, we're at the end now, but I just want to point it out. But we, just on the requirements, I had my hand up before, sort of Mr. Foran went through all that. But since I was there at, at the meeting when we discussed this, the issue is not so much to make it easier or take away anything that will help our students in the future, like capstone, they obviously still have the opportunity to do any of those extra things. But the issue is for it to not be a hindrance for, to anyone's graduation when it's not actually a state requirement. It's actually something that, you know, we've adopted as a district, as many have. So that's kind of what I wanted to relay from the conversation that we had in looking at this new policy.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff, for that response too.
And then I just have one more question, if I may. We're still following the requirements that Nancy put out, it's a pass with distinction, pass and then incomplete, and those students will still have the inability to graduate if they have an incomplete, like if they were not doing well before they left school, we're not going to allow them to just leave school.
Correct.
And graduate. That is correct. They have to complete their work, and again, that will be, you know, at the close of the school year. We'll have staff, we'll have, we're creating those assignments now, if you will. They're more project-based and the students will have to show.
Completion and.
Of those, those projects in order to graduate.
I'm sorry, I don't think I followed that. So I thought there was a pass with distinction. A pass and, and so if you were incomplete before, or how does that work? What projects are they getting? So is that for students who are? Good.
Oh, those are, those are being worked on now by, by grade level. And so, yeah, it went, just as you said, if students were passing prior to the school closure, they will continue to pass. If they continually engage from the day we started online learning to the end, they will pass with distinction. If students were not passing before, but engaged during this virtual time, they will receive a pass. For those students who are failing before COVID and are not making any attempt at all, we, we, we really don't want to fail students. I'm going to be quite honest with you, this was a long discussion, but what we do want to give them is an opportunity to work with a staff member. It might be virtual, so we can't really say what the summer's going to bring, but in a very small group to, to work on this project, an assignment. If we see good effort put in there, then they pass.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any further questions on this item?
I just wanted to add that, like, I, districts all around the state are struggling with grading and how you grade in this. I, I was informed today that for the elementary level, they're not doing any sort of formal grade. We have a standards-based grading system and they're not doing that for the third term. In the high school setting, they're basically saying, for assignments that would hurt a student, like things that aren't complete, they can't be, they, they're exempt from those assignments. But in the cases of, like the work they do, count it towards their grade. You know, that's sort of giving them credit for what they're doing, but not letting the fact that they might not be able to access or have difficulty with it. And again, I, I think that this is, this is a reasonable response to the situation we are in. And that's, I, I understand, like, we've had this conversation before, Gail, about standards and all of that, and I, I understand where you're coming from. But I also think that this is something that's definitely hitting our most at-risk students the hardest. And the things that we can do to support and enable them and recognize the work that they're doing, I, I have to support.
Yeah.
And also request that we waive, we normally do two readings on policy. I, given the timely nature of this, I'd request that we waive the second reading and just vote to approve instead of postpone.
Okay. So we have a second in motion. So everybody, well, why don't I just put it to a vote? All in favor of passing this resolution to modify the graduation requirements, say aye.
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 And aye. Any opposed? Hearing no opposition and no thumbs down, I will.
Aye.
Declare. We're having a little problem with delays here, so. Let's.
We have to remember the wait times.
The wait time, yes. Okay, and that is our last item of the agenda. All right, so I will.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn. All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay.
And. All in favor.
All in favor, I think some of us are going to be eating dinner and some are still voting.
Since we earned, I am going to stop the live stream and the recording.